Okey dokey.
All right, I'll call this town of Isle Haven Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Roll call, Tom Anthony, Lad Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Marjorie Stratton. Motion to approve agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? You and I here.
Yes.
Number four, approve and sign treasures warrant number twenty-one, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, there's none here.
I just noticed that too.
Heather White.
Oh, right.
That's our agenda.
Number five, communications, Marjorie?
I don't, um, I'll just address it under town manager.
Okay. Number six, speakers from the floor, Heather White, where are you?
Well, she wanted to come and ask, and this isn't gonna happen for a while, but she wanted to have one of her art shows here at the, in this room, at the town office. And she would put up, um...
Esels?
Yeah, esels and things.
Displayed boards or stuff?
Just to do something different.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
This is for school-related or?
Yeah, school art. So it'd be a school art show, and she would be here during times when it was open to the public and...
Oh, great idea.
She just wanted to discuss that, and it wouldn't be happening until next April.
Oh, wow.
But, um, I didn't seek any harm in just, you know, running it by the board to see if... I didn't think there would be any problem with it, but...
Sounds good to me.
Yep, I'm good.
Consensus? Go. Uh, number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. A downtown project is...
We don't really have any updates. I mean, everything's ongoing, it's kind of stalled. We're waiting to hear from our representative at EDA about the, um, rescoping the project, you know, to reduce the size of the project. We're applying for more funds through USDA to do the stormwater project. Um, the NBRC part, the parking lot and the boat ramps, that's ongoing. We're waiting for the final designs or final plans that will come to the board. Um, now, it's just kind of a...
Hurry up and wait, kind of, at this point. But it is ongoing work, which is a good thing. Um, B, Public Works?
Well, I gotta talk fast. Um, so I recently went up to the school to talk about school waste program. One of the things that Marjorie and I have noticed is, obviously, there's a lot of wet food and such going into the waste, which can easily turn it around from getting on a ferryboat, et cetera. Um, being that one, they're one of the larger waste contributors. I went out and spoke with the cafeteria staff and Brian, and we talked about things such as composting, an in-house compactor, there's grants out there that they could get for that, and other ways of reducing waste at the school. Um, just after our conversation, they went around and spoke to some teachers about different things and how they could save on, on waste, food waste especially. Um, they generate probably two of the big trash cans like that size a day, um, plus several bags, sixteen, I think, there's like almost seventy bottles of milk or cartons of milk. So, um, since talking to them, they've already decreased their waste quite a bit without even us starting any plans, but we do have plans to get some other people in there to help us maybe get together a composting plan, again, buy a compactor to squish some of the milk cartons and such to kind of lower the waste there. So that's ongoing. Um, at the transfer station, we had a, actually, I think it was a really good visit with DEP, you know? Um, we've been working on additional signer, signage and labeling for a lot of the waste. Um, I put together a new binder with a safety plan. I've been working on hazard assessments, personnel policies, the operation of the annuals there.
And this is all toward getting this license.
Right.
Yep. Um, so I've been doing a lot of work on that. I actually just finished hazard assessments today, um, so I need to go up now and talk to them about that, and then I've got some train, upcoming safety training that I'm trying to schedule for them to cover all the plans that we've now handed down. So I think that, oh yeah, we, um, we just did module one and module two for transfer attendant.
Training?
Training. Um, myself, Luther, and Kenny all took those classes, it was a full day of courses. Um, there's still one more that they can take if they want, I think Kenny may.
What does that entail?
That makes him a certified attendant.
But what, what's in the classes? What do you?
Um, the first one was just about, um, the operations of the transfer station, more or less, and then the second one was all based on the reporting, um, annual reporting, quarterly reporting, labeling, hazardous waste, et cetera, et cetera, so...
So, um, that section four oh two of the DEP regulations for the transfer station?
Yep. So, I mean, it was, it was a pretty good class, it, there was a lot of good information there, and, um, they definitely, you know, heard some, some positive stuff that they need to be doing, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all going well, baby steps, but we're getting there, so... Um, the road crew, I tried to reach the, which I was just telling Marjorie, the MDOTs, Darryl Bells, he's the traffic engineer that came out, or he works for our region, setting the speed limits. Um, I have four calls into him, left in voicemails, he does not get back to me, so Marjorie's got another person that she's gonna reach out to and see if she can help me find that one. But anyway, we've gone with his last report, and we've been changing the speed limit signs out and putting the correct ones in. So that has been going, um, yesterday and today, and I hope that we've got a few more twenties that we've got to order, that I ordered this morning. So, once that's done, we'll have that in the way, in the making. Um, so I think that's it for road crew for the biggest part, anyway. Um, Ellis Construction and Tom, um, they are the ones that vacuum out our, um, our catch basins. They have, uh, they have, they don't have cameras, nobody in the state of Maine has cameras. The closest one was New Hampshire, they're out of business, so the next one is Massachusetts, and I think that'd be an ungodly price to get somebody from Massachusetts to come here.
Not very viable business evidently.
Yeah, no, because, no, nobody wants to put cameras in catch basins, I don't get it, um, so the outlets. But anyway, um, he's working on a, uh, a schedule to get out here and look at those two at least to start with and see what he can do with them, if anything. He doesn't sound very confident, but he said he'd come out and take a look at it and give it a try.
Okay.
Um, so he's on to that, and I think that's it.
Whoa.
How'd I do?
You made it within the time limit.
Oh, shoot.
Well, good job, Millie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Millie is the, uh, we all set with the dump, everything that need to be done is done, with no more, no more stops for Wood and Curran or whoever else to be involved in.
Is terms of the licensing or?
No, no, in terms of the construction and the final, finalization of the project. Have we done with the project as far as original tempo?
Yeah.
Uh, did they get the, your road crew building, there were some things you wanted done there, that stuff, have it done?
At the, my building?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's done as well. Yep, thank you. Um, we do, actually, I will add, we do, uh, the school has given Public Works its old generator, which is perfectly fine, it's just not big enough to run the school, so we are gonna take that, we're working on right now, just getting a pad down and getting somebody to come out here and do it. It may not be able to happen this fall because it's getting cold, so concrete's kind of hard to pull this time of year, but we're working on it.
Oh, that's good, cool, yeah, that's great. Anybody have any more questions? Alrighty, thanks, Millie.
You're welcome.
Good report.
Thank you.
Number eight, old business, nothing under old business.
Well, I guess I, I could talk about this, uh, I didn't get any further comments on that aquaculture lease, and the comment period is, um, ending, so...
Right.
I don't know if anybody got any... We sent in our questionnaire from the Harbor Master, I did contact Pete Gasperini and, um, and Jim, and they filled out the questionnaire for, um, DMR.
Didn't get anything back from the public when you put it in the wind?
Hmm?
You put it, I saw that you put it in the wind, you didn't get anything back from the public?
Who's behind us? Who's, who's the, uh, the person?
The applicant?
Salt Sea something.
The applicant is, well, it's called, uh, Salt of the Earth Sea Farm, but the na, the, the man's name is Gil Perry from Hancock, Maine. Oh, that's how it is.
Yeah, okay. Um, we'll go back up to number six now that Heather White is here.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I just slipped right in and just, I'd be right if I was...
You're fine, we'd like to hear your plan.
Oh, okay.
It'll go on your permanent record. Permanent record.
I, I briefed them a little bit about...
I just, I just, I like timing though, all the time, and I thought it might be fun to have the art show in a different place this year, just around this beautiful community. This room is so beautiful, I have all these screens and easels. Um, I also was hoping it could be like a gallery-style event where it was open Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, so families and community members would have a chance to come whenever they want, not just a little hour and a half on a very specific, you know, night, I mean, I'll just do it one time, if it's great, maybe years later I'll try it again, and if it's horrible, I'll never do it again. Like, so I just was thinking it'd be fun to have a new venue, have it feel gallery-style, use a room that people are familiar with it, but use it in a different way, um, and let people be able to enjoy the art on their own time and have a little bit more time. Um, I also, usually I have about five hundred pieces of art up at work at the school for like an art show, but I just want each kid to do one thing, so I feel like a hundred and twenty pieces will look really nice in this room, whereas a hundred and twenty pieces will look very small at the school.
Right.
It would feel like empty, kind of like fifty people in our office room and feel like no one came, but fifty people at Waterman feels like everyone came. Um, so that's kind of my thinking, so I was hoping I could, I was just wondering what the, what the conversation would be about that, and also, could I use it for the weekend? How does that work? Is that okay? Oh, wait, one more thing, there'll be stickers.
Will there be wine?
Hmm, no, no one.
No wine?
I'm not coming then.
No, no one at the art show. Um, but like, see how we all get stickers that say like, "I voted," and it feels like you were in this room on this island and you voted, and it's a very like, kind of symbol of that, like, so we have like, "I went to the student art show," so it feels like a , you know, a connection. Marjorie had a great idea about, don't need to tell them that part.
No, I didn't, no.
Maybe there could be a, a piece or two that gets selected from the show with student permission and family permission that become a part, permanent part, like framed awesome, and be part of the town office, like, "Oh yeah, remember that, we, we did that thing, and maybe it was great," or, I don't know, anyway, so that was, Marjorie had that great idea to add to it, and so I'm open to, I'm open to yes, I'm open to no, can never hurt to ask, like, what do you guys, what do you guys think?
We think it's a great idea.
Okay.
But, I mean, I, we'll probably, we could come up with all kinds of cool things, we have months to think of it, but...
Yeah, and it's April, it's not tomorrow.
Right.
It's not even December, it's like April.
Yeah.
I wanna like, get on it like ahead of time, I'll be, anytime the show's open, I will be there, like, it's not like a drop-in thing, I'll be sitting here smiling, probably knitting.
Playing the cello.
Yes. I mean, I get students in the room, it's good to do this today.
So, yeah, to be honest, music.
Does anyone see him? Should I, um, can I carry forward with this thinking, like, should I cut all the...
Yeah, definitely. Oh, we've, yeah, we already...
We already said yes.
We're all giving the thumbs up already.
Oh, in the key, it'll be no big deal, however that works for the weekend, we'll just work that out.
Yeah, you can work with Marjorie on that.
Oh, well, then you don't, then you don't need to hear any, okay, so that's, I can be very chatty, so I'll just...
Okay, Heather. No, we're excited, I think it's great, I love the art show.
Well, then I'll move forward, and I'll just keep planning that way, and I'll start slowly and tell them people...
I'm actually glad that you're cutting it back to that many pieces, because when you go into school, it's like, you know...
No, it's fun, it's fun, 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 but I, it's boring to do it the same way every year, anyway, so, yeah, oh, yippee.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, great idea.
Okay, well, yeah, all right, well, sorry I breezed in and breezed out, but now I'll let you go back to it.
We're breezing in and breezing out right along with you, so...
Okay, all right, well, thanks for letting me take an extra five minutes to talk.
Great idea.
All right.
Thanks, Heather. Okay, see ya.
See you.
Okay, so, that's a great idea, I'm really, that'll be exciting. Um, on to number nine, new business, and I don't know if Marjorie had anything to add, that we don't have any new business, so...
I just have a couple of things under town manager.
Okay, so let's just move right on to that, and number ten.
So we did get our twenty twenty-five rate announcement for our Maine municipal employees' health trust. The health plans are going up nine percent, but I don't know if you recall, we do put in a ten percent increase...
Yeah.
Um, for that second half of the year, so we should be fine budget-wise, and the dental plan went up one percent, which isn't too bad, so, um, I just wanted to let you know about that, um, but we should be fine in terms of our budget. The other thing that's coming up is this, um, starting in January, there's a new law in Maine called the Paid Family and Medical Leave, and what that means is that we, as an employer, and there was, there was some thought that it would be repealed, because the Department of Labor hasn't even really come up with a plan as to how to deal with this. They have a so-called portal that we need to log into, and our, our payroll company will deal with the, um, you know, just like...
All logistics part of it.
Yeah, social security and Medicare, they'll do the withdrawing. What we have to decide as a town is, we can either pay the whole one percent, it's one percent of the, um, uh, payroll, or we can take point five percent from the employee and the employer can pay point five. So, um, I'm not sure if this is something that you want to have as an agenda item, of course, we have to know by, uh, January first, 'cause when that, when it begins, whether we're gonna do the one percent or the point five, um, but that's, that's the only decision, it's a mandatory program that we have to participate in. We had some thought, and a lot of the towns thought that it would be repealed because it, it's, there's no structure to it, um, Department of Labor, Labor is even questioning how they're gonna deal with this program, um, but it seems to be going forward, and January first is right around the corner.
What are other towns thinking as far as whether they're gonna...
It's kind of fifty-fifty.
Is it?
So, how does this differ from the Family Medical Leave Act?
Family Medical Leave Act is just, um, it's a program whereby an employee can ask for time off...
Right.
Because, oh, you know, my parent is elderly and I need to take, uh, I can't remember the number of weeks that you're allowed to take off. And the protection with that program is that, for instance, if somebody took some time off, we wouldn't be able to fire them, but, uh, they need to, at this point, the employee would have to use up...
Right.
Uh, their, um...
Vacation time and sick time.
And personal days, you know, before, and, so it's not like a, a paid leave...
Right.
In that respect, that, the current program, that, you know, what you're talking about, uh, at least that's my understanding. I've only had, I think, in my career, one person use that program.
I dealt with it a fair amount when, when I was in, in management, I dealt with it a fair amount.
Yeah.
Because they used, had to use up their vacation and...
Correct.
PT, personal days and...
So now they've created, the state of Maine has created this program for paid family and medical leave, and, um, employers need to pay this one percent or point five percent, you know, whichever, when they decide, into this program, and then in May of twenty twenty-six, people can apply to receive these funds.
Maybe only reserve.
Yes, yeah.
So they must have to meet certain criteria in order to qualify, just like...
Right, and those are the things that haven't been ironed out, and, you know, frankly, uh, state of Maine Department of Labor is, um, they're scrambling to get this program in place as well, as I understand it, anyway.
It's kind of concerning that they expect you to start paying in January first, and they don't have a plan laid out.
Right, right.
That's concerning.
So there was some thought that it would be repealed, but it hasn't yet, so, uh, we need to move forward with that.
Maybe could we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and if we could...
Make a decision, yeah.
I was...
I'd like to see the numbers, um, yeah.
So, annually, it'll be about nine thousand, but you're right, I mean, I can calculate the amount of money, so, half a year, it's gonna be around, uh, forty-five hundred dollars, but I can do a, a closer calculation.
Do you think there'll be more information later in the month of December?
There's some webinars happening early in December.
Well, I was gonna suggest that we wait until like, a meeting on the sixteenth of December, and that way maybe Marjorie will have more information to share with us, so we can have a better, um, more educated answer.
Some of the attorneys are having webinars, Department of Labor themselves having webinars that are happening early in December. Everybody's kind of like, "Oh, okay, you know, what do, what do we do here?" So, that's gonna be happening, um, those are really, yeah, so when we get it on an agenda, there are some handouts, um, that kind of explain the program, as far as I know, anyway, so those are the two things that I wanted to let you know about, the health trust increase and that paid family and medical leave that will start, uh, in January, January first, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I was gonna, 'cause they don't know, you don't know answers, so I'm not gonna ball with that, that's a question. I was just curious, like, if we decide one thing and then go, "Can you change it?"
Oh, that's a good question, though, actually.
You know, like, "Oh, this is not very, this is not working, unless, can we resend that and go back?"
Yeah, clean up splinter with the employees and then just push back on their end, can we change our mind?
Yeah, I just want to be able to, to know if we have, have that option to change.
It's not easy to increase than it is to reduce.
Nine thousand doesn't sound like a lot of money, but if it's coming from the employees, half part of it, it does add up, take away from your paycheck, so...
To that benefit, but that's, it's hard, it's hard to see that from...
Yes.
Their benefit.
Guess what I think about is, you know, while I, your experience is interesting, I mean, like I said, in my career, I've only had one person ever take advantage of it, but, um, so for us, it doesn't, you know, doesn't seem, but you say you had a lot...
I had a hundred fifty tow tar drivers, people, people get hurt in that job, so...
I had to take family medical leave, so...
It does, I mean, it's a good program for people that need to use it.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to see what happens to the money that employees pay in and then they never use, do they get it back in full?
Doubt it.
You know?
I don't, I don't think so.
Goes into a pool and that's like, you never, you never see it again.
You know, it goes into a pool, so, yeah, yeah, paying all this money...
Right.
And not gonna be using, I mean, it just, it seems unfair.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, like, social security.
Well...
In the end, we're all paying for it, 'cause if we, if the town pays, pays...
Yeah, it's gonna come out of...
Yeah.
But it will really affect the employees, you know?
Directly.
Yes.
But they're also the ones that have the potential benefit, potential benefits.
Yeah. I think, I think Marjorie should do the webinars, and I agree with you, Pam, that we should discuss it in December.
Yeah, 'cause you might, might find it's a thing, this all goes through, like, you said, we've only had one case of it happening.
Well, I'm just saying in my career.
You know, I know, and you're, you're crazy, but if people can get paid, you know...
You can't do that, it's gotta go through, you, there's a big form you have to fill out for FMLA now for non-paid, it's not something you can just say, "Hey, I'm, Marjorie, I'm gonna go take care of my mother or my father for six weeks, I'm gonna need the time off." FMLA, it's not, you have to have like paperwork and writings.
Well, I, I, I know, I know how it works, but I'm saying, if there's gonna be money available to get paid while you're off, that's what the point of this program is, people might do it more.
Well, let's wait and see what information, um, Marjorie can have for us at that meeting on the sixteenth. I'm assuming we won't, oh, that's one, two, one, two, one, two, three weeks, I'm assuming nobody will want to meet, um, the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I'm sorry, seventeen, that's, um, the thirty-first.
So we're meeting on December third.
Yep, December third.
And then December seventeenth.
And then not again until the seventh...
After the new year.
Marjorie, can you ask one more question than we were searching? Do employees have to sign up for it?
This calendar is right. I have my other calendars.
I don't think so, my, I mean, I...
Some of my other calendars have Monday over there.
From the information I have, it's, it's a mandatory program, but the only, the option for the employer is, can we, does the employer want to pay the full one percent, or are they, or are they going to pay just point five and have the employee pay the other point five? Premiums will be deducted from your pay beginning with the first payday after January first.
Well, what if the town, a town doesn't want to be involved in it?
You don't have a choice, you don't mandate it.
I mean, I know, but it's like, well, what if, like, half the state of Maine calls we're not doing this?
It's required.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna have a lot of things shoved down our throat.
Required with no plan, that just doesn't...
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens when the time comes.
Maybe they'll have more of a plan by the seventeenth.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. It'll probably be a great one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, any more questions, or just all set for now?
Let's go.
Alrighty, moving right along, number eleven, report of members, anybody have any?
North Haven Road, obviously flooded again, where are we, anything, any action on the permit?
Well, I mean, as you know, we met with, I don't have anything more, but when we met with Kevin from Woodard and Curran, um, and the representative from Army Corps of Engineers, I mean, we had presented that basic plan, um, and what they said at the time is that, um, there would have to be a hydraulic analysis, it would be required for the mitigation, and there would, um, it would require mitigation in terms of, if we're giving up a wetland, you've got to, um, how do you...
Create wetlands somewhere else.
Yeah, um, we'd have to approve the purpose and need for the project, do a historic properties analysis, fish habitat, endangered species analysis, I mean, what Kevin, what they were trying, what they're trying to do is get a statement from DEP about what would be required for that project through DEP, so you have to, from Army Corps of Engineers, they're saying you'd have to mitigate for the loss of the salt marsh, so, so they're saying, what's in place now is, is currently acceptable, and what you want to do is gonna take that away.
How?
I'm just telling you...
I, I know you, I know you're repeating, but it was blocked up before, and then we...
It doesn't matter.
We created.
Well, the engineer and the state, it, the state...
Well, it was, I mean, it's still gonna be a wetland.
It still had water in it before they messed with it.
Our first meeting with them, I didn't get the warm fuzzies that they were gonna move on it at all.
I'm not surprised.
Were you at this meeting with, uh...
Well, I was the...
So there'd also, yeah, in addition to, um, Army Corps of Engineers, you'd have to get permitting from Department of Marine Resources, resources for fish passage, and that would be coordinated with Army Corps of Engineers, and the DEP would require the Natural Resource Protection Act application, um...
I don't believe there are too many fish going out of there.
I love, I love government agencies.
I was gonna say, then why don't we focus...
Government agencies and rules, all right.
Why don't we focus on the road? If we can't focus on the culvert, focus on the road.
We had this, the study done about raising the road, and what I, um, the response that the selectmen had was that it was too expensive, so, I mean, we can move forward and try to borrow money or do something to raise the road. I'm sorry?
You still have to permit, though, don't you?
No, for the road?
But that's, you're talking about eight hundred mi, eight hundred million, something like that, or eight hundred thousand or whatever?
Eight hundred million.
It was like nine, it was like nine hundred thousand, but... It was like nine, it was like nine hundred thousand, but that, I don't care how far down they dig.
Twenty-five feet is the board that finally hit ledge or something and it was only in places.
Yeah, and only, yeah, it was only in place.
I mean, you're almost better off to dig it out and put some sort of a.
I think they have to build a bridge.
I was thinking the same thing.
And then you don't have to worry about the center. You can, you can design a bridge.
To allow flow.
Well, I'm just telling you what the facts are. I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but it's just, it's not a simple process.
Has the D E P been, been contacted yet? Are they involved at all? Or what are the engineers doing? Or what are they, what do we expect from them?
What we have asked them for is, uh, a brief analysis. I mean, cause this isn't a project that we've, you know, given them a work order for. This is extra work that we're just asking them to analyze this potential project. I've asked them for a brief, uh, statement about what permitting would be necessary for what you wanna do. And I guess one of the things that I wanna know is that, I mean, is this a consensus? I mean, am I, is this, does the whole board want me to move forward with this project, potential project of putting rocks in? I mean, I don't, that's the other thing. I mean, if, if this board isn't, as a, as a whole, isn't interested in that project, then that's my other question. I mean, what am I sup, how am I supposed to know how to move forward?
I mean, I'm much more interested in going down that road than going down the road of that.
Waysgate type.
The contraption that they, they wanted.
I guess from my perspective, every option that we can explore.
Mm-hmm.
To try to, uh, find a solution, a lot, not short-term, but long-term solution to this issue. Um, it, it should be explored to the best extent that we can.
But raising the road is off the table right now.
I don't think that's, I, I mean, I, I don't think, I think it, I, every, all of it's an option. We, we need to look at, we need, we need as many options as possible to try to find the best.
We have the study for raising the road, but that's, but you don't wanna pursue that at this time?
No, I don't.
Well, I think we, we need to figure out how many hoops we're gonna have to jump through with no guarantee that we're gonna get approval to change the culvert, to put rocks wherever they're supposed to be. It sounds like we have ten hoops we have to jump through just to find out if we can do it.
Find out how many more we have to jump through.
Right.
But I think what you're looking from us, Marjorie, is if we go down the rabbit hole and start jumping through the hoops, you wanna know that if we can do that project, the board would approve to put the rocks there.
I mean, this is a, a proposal that Donald came up with, but I, from my perspective, I would like to know that the, the board as a whole wants me to continue, uh, down this road to ask Kevin Trainer for the information, um, that we had asked for from the meeting on, uh, in September.
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I would be as well.
Okay. So I'll get in touch with, uh, Kevin Trainer again and see if I can get some information, but, um, I guess I'm just. So are you saying that you want to move forward with the permit process?
I think what, from my perspective, I'd like to understand what the permit process is.
Okay.
That's from my, my perspective. What exactly, what are the initial hoops that we need to jump through? And what's the cost associated with that compared to what we already have on the table? As far as raising the road bed, that gives us options, places to look, think, explore what we're, what's best for the town, both economically and functionality.
But at the end of the day, we, we cannot just sit there and ignore this.
No.
And we have been at that.
I would like to have all the information that we have so far. Myself, so I can look at it.
That was probably, like, a year ago.
But what she's received.
And that came out to be an astronomical solid woodwork.
Okay. Is this, we've already had this given to us, right?
Yes.
Yes. And I don't think we're ignoring it.
Do you have any more information?
Couple of different solutions.
In addition to this, Marjorie?
The only thing I have is from the, um, initial meeting that we had with, uh, Heather Stukas from Army Corps of Engineer. Millie was at the meeting, Donald Young and Kevin Trainer from Woodard and Curran. And they explained that we would have to go through the Army Corps of Engineer permitting, and then there would also be Department of Marine Resources and the D E P, uh, Natural Resource Protection Act, uh, permit application. It's a, you know, fairly lengthy process.
Hmm.
I don't know, I don't have any estimate as to the expense of the permitting.
That's what my next question is gonna be.
I'd say a little frame bridge would be nice, but that's not, that's not gonna be cheap either.
You're gonna talk millions of dollars, but, I mean, you can't keep band-aiding it either. I mean, there's, there's a significant drop in the pavement. You can see where it's already gone down from the last time that it was repaired. And there's just nothing there for to sit on. It's gonna be, um.
It's gonna be continued to.
It's gonna be continuous unless you do it right and just be done with it. And then it's gonna be fifty years before anything has to happen to it again.
I mean, that's kind of with, not talking about the road, but just slowing down the water, the one benefit in my mind of doing, just blocking back up with rocks, once that's there, that's a thing that doesn't have to be touched. In theory, forever.
Sounds to me like they're not gonna approve it.
Did you get the idea that they were warm and fuzzy about it when?
No, I didn't. I thought that they were some things we had to do and we need to lay out a plan and do it. And they looked very clear. They wanna know what the options would be other than this and get an idea what those costs would be. And then, and we got the cost for, for fixing the road. We can very quickly calculate the cost of going an alternate route around it. And I think those were the things that I walked away thinking the engineers really wanted to see.
I think it's unfortunate that was only one person, board member at that meeting. On meetings like this, I feel the whole board should be invited to attend, not just one person. We don't know what was said. You know, that's, that's not right. If you're gonna have a discussion of this magnitude, the board should be there. That really is, is not the way to operate. I'm sorry.
I agree because we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I don't know what they, what they're thinking. You think they weren't warm and fuzzy. He thinks they are, you know.
They were all about the wetlands and not changing it and.
That, you know, it's confusing. Not happy with that at all. Sorry.
Well, I don't think anybody is.
Well, you heard what I just said. That's my feeling.
So the, what I'm hearing is that you still want information about how to move forward with the permitting to put the rocks in.
They can't, I mean, they can't know more than tell us now.
But I do agree that we should get some idea what the cost is, is just so we know why, what we're going into.
Mm-hmm.
And that was my thought, that the engineers are gonna provide.
Yes, Millie.
I set up another meeting with the folks that we talked to initially and then everybody can get cleared up on this and decide which way to go together instead of one by one.
I'll see what I can do. Try to put some, light some fires under some people.
Hmm?
They don't move easily.
Especially for twelve hundred people.
I don't have anything.
Thank, thank you, Millie, for digging into the culverts. I appreciate it.
Maybe we could train a small dog to carry a camera down.
We'll just go in and dig it out.
Tom, you've got your dog, is, is, um, you've got him well-trained. Maybe he would want.
The little one not yet.
Okay, well, anyway. What's that?
He's the, the new one, the little one is the Barker of the bunch.
All right, um, if we are all set with this discussion, then we'll move on to number twelve, motion to adjourn.
Sold.
Second, on favor. Okay, thank you.